Okay, good evening. It is Tuesday, June 21st, 2022. It is 6:39 PM. And we are in the Nashua North Boardroom. Thank you, everybody, for being patient as we are a little bit late today. Tonight, we have myself, Heather Raymond, Ms. Darling, and Ms. Johnson. We also have guests. Our Director of Athletics, Lisa Jingeris. I should have written this down before. And our Director of Security? Is that the?
Assistant Director.
Assistant Director?
Operations Safety Security.
Assistant Director of Plant Operations. Oh, I was going to give you a higher title. Sorry. I'll take it up with the new Superintendent. I'm sorry. And that's Mr. Lassard. Okay. So, we have nine things in front of us tonight, but I'm hoping that they won't take a terrible long time because Ms. Jingeris and Mr. Lassard have been kind enough to look at all of the changes that have come about because of changes in laws this year and find the policies that they affect and then update those policies to comply with the law. So there's not a lot of discretion on our part when it comes to some of these things. So, the first policy this evening is JICT, which is our Student-Parent Chromebook Agreement. And this one? Yeah, go ahead. Ms. Jingeris can speak to it.
Sorry. Just when Mr. Lassard and I were asked to sit in this evening on behalf of administration, I was kind of filled in a little bit on why we needed to review this policy again. And it was recently approved in January when the Chromebooks were going to be handed out to our high school students. And in setting up the portal with the city to accept the online payments, it was reviewed by City Legal. And there's just a couple of places that they've added. You can see that in the red suggestions from the city attorney on items to add to the policy for reapproval.
Thank you, Ms. Jingeris. I found my sheet with my self-notes that say that, finally. So, this, like, there's only a couple of small things. If you look in the 1, 2, 3, 4th section, under Dissonance Acts, there's a little bit of explanation to expand that. And then, at the bottom of the first page, it says, "What to do if you have damage." We've added two steps to make it a little bit more clear to everybody what to do if a Chromebook gets damaged. Does anyone have any questions or comments? No? Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Darling.
So, I did notice on here, and I can't remember if this got brought up last time. We say in here that if it gets damaged, that they have to pay the full price of the Chromebook, but we don't say what that is. I feel like an agreement saying you're going to have to pay the full amount should disclose what that is.
Did Mr. Rodriguez tell you the approximate cost? Because I don't remember from...
He did not, but that may be left out purposely because it will fluctuate depending on how many you're buying at a time, when you're buying it. Is it high demand? Are they backordered? Are they in stock? What's the supply? So, the full market price. I know when our IT department purchases things, they're often purchasing in bulk, so they're getting better prices. So, again, we can get that answer from Mr. Rodriguez, but again, I would assume that that was sort of left out on purpose.
Yeah, I'm trying to recall. Ms. Johnson, do you remember? It's like, I'm guessing like $200. Yeah. These aren't the fanciest Chromebooks that have ever been made, but they're not low-quality either. I mean, these are very resilient Chromebooks that our kids are using in school already.
I've seen what happens when they fall. It's, they bounce?
No, we don't say that. They don't bounce. They're very fragile, and we should take care of them.
Listen to Ms. Raymond. I'm a bad influence. Don't bounce your Chromebooks. It'll cost you money.
All right. But I can ask Mr. Rodriguez to have that for our full board meeting.
Thank you.
No problem. Any other questions or comments? Anyone? No? Okay. Then, I'm going to move to send JICT to the full board.
Second.
Never mind.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I didn't hear any noes. Noes? Okay, great. The next one is Policy GCOA. And this one is Evaluation of Athletic Coaches. And I'm just going to turn this right over to Ms. Jingeris.
Thank you. So, the only change in this policy, it was most recently reviewed, edited, and approved in September of 2019. And recently, you may have noticed, your HR personnel recommendations are a little smaller because our coaches are no longer going through the board approval process because in the most recent teacher negotiations contracts, the coaching stipends were removed from the teacher's contract. So, it is no longer a requirement that everything come to the board for approval. So, the last three lines of the policy basically can be stricken because no longer will you get that full list of, here are the coaches that are being renominated to continue on or come back next year. So, it is just striking that portion of the policy. Everything else remains the same.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
Nope.
Okay. Then, I move to send that one to the full board, GCOA.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. Any opposed? All right. Look at us. This is a good start. Okay. The next policy is Policy JLCJA. This is called Emergency Plan for Sports-Related Injuries and Additional Protocols for Athletics' Participation. It's a really, really long, really long policy, really long name. Well, not a long policy, long name. And it is, as a result of a change in a law. So, this is brand, brand-new. The new law that requires this policy takes effect in September of 2022, and it affects students' grades 4 to 12. And you'll notice at the top, oh, maybe we don't have it here. Yeah. You'll notice that the, oh, we don't have it anymore? I found it. Sorry, everyone. There's a number of associated policies. Ms. Jingeris and I did go through all of those other policies, and some of them are here tonight. I think one will be in July. So, this is, she did a lot of work on this. Anything else you want us to know about it, Ms. Jingeris?
No, that's basically it. The new law, SB 148, is, as Mrs. Raymond said, effective in September, and it's requiring all school districts to have emergency action plans for sport-related injuries from grade 4 through 12. So, I'm working on finalizing those plans. Mr. Lassard and I have spoken, and he'll review them once they're completed. But this is the recommended policy that needs to be approved to comply with that law.
Any questions or comments? Go ahead, Ms. Darling.
My only question is, I see this section here, the Sports Injury Emergency Action Plan. As much as I hate adding paperwork, would that be considered more of a procedure attached to the policy and therefore its own thing? Like the dash R?
So, the emergency action plans will be a completely separate document. And again, I'm going to put Mr. Lassard on the spot, but emergency action plans aren't usually public because there could be some safety information in there that we would want to keep private. But the majority of the plans could be public. It's basically, what do you do in case of an emergency if there's an athletic trainer? What do you do in case of emergency if there's not an athletic trainer? What steps to go through? There's information on sudden cardiac arrest. There's information on heat illnesses. The section you referenced, those A to G, that is directly from the law.
Okay.
Almost word-for-word.
Yep. Perfect. But, yeah, as we discussed earlier, a lot of our emergency plans, we have to keep confidential to staff who will be executing those plans.
Very smart.
But I think this is a good start. And frankly, I think a lot of it, we already do.
Yes.
So...
Yeah. It's pretty much taking what we do in practice and putting it into policy.
I don't see any other hands, so I move to send JLCJA to the full board for approval.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. So, the next policy is JL CJ. And this is one of our existing policies that our district developed in 2018. And Ms. Jingeris was instrumental in developing this policy, along with a student, I think there was a parent. Who else was on the team? The athletic trainer?
The policy, I think what you're referring to is the Return to Learn Protocol.
Oh, okay.
Which is what, yes, we had parents, students, nurses, our athletic trainer, as well as local physicians that were involved in the Return to Learn Protocol. This policy speaks specifically about concussions and head injuries for our student athletes. And the edits I'm suggesting at this point, from the last time it was revised and approved in 2018, is how we distribute our information to our student athletes and their parents on concussions and head injuries. All of the references, all of the changes, basically talk about the fact that the information is included in the Student-Athlete-Parent Handbook, which is agreed to in the online registration process at the time of registration before every season. So, that's basically what it references and what all the changes do, as opposed to the implication that we are distributing and handing out paper information.
Okay.
So, those are the changes. And it is, again, it is done seasonally. The information is in the Student-Athlete-Parent Handbook, which is also available online in both Spanish and Portuguese. And the concussion and head injury information is in there.
Thank you. I messed that up when we were meeting to talk about it, too, and I was like, "Don't do that." And then, I read my note and was like, "Oh, I should talk about that."
And this is one of the policies referenced in the new policy that you just moved forward.
Yes. Questions or comments? No? Okay, great. Then, I move to send JL CJ to the full board for approval.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Jingeris. That's it, right? The rest of them are all safety, safety.
Yes, just other than the last one.
Oh, yes, other than the last one. Would you like us to move the last one to now so that you don't have to stay?
Well, I'll stay anyway. But that last one, it just, it's not directly related to athletics, but it is a duplicate policy of one that was recently approved in March. So, it's just a matter of rescinding that policy.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't keeping you here unnecessarily.
I appreciate that.
Okay. So, the next policy is EBCB, which is regarding fire safety. And this policy, you'll see, we looked at in 2019. We had looked at it about two years before that as well because the fire marshal likes us to stay up to date on fire safety. Ms. Lassard, Mr. Lassard, did I miss anything else?
No, you handled it perfectly. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Does anyone have any questions about our fire safety policy?
Is the only change just adding that microwaves that are used for educational purposes are required to be commercial-grade?
That's correct.
Yeah. So, if it's in red, that's the changes, otherwise it's existing. And we do have some of those, right? For like, it's not called Home Ec anymore. It's called something else, those classrooms.
Correct. So, the issue this year kind of stemmed, we were starting to see microwaves in a certain science lab at a school where they weren't there before. It raised questions, you know, what are you using these for? What are you putting in them? Because they got to be certain grade. They weren't doing anything too crazy with them, so the fire department was fine with them. You know, so long as they're commercial-grade, you can continue on. If it was something really dangerous, you know, they probably would have made them get, they're called lab-grade, you know, microwaves. Those are extremely expensive, so that they're okay with the commercial-grade instead of household.
Perfect. Okay. All right. See no other hands? I move to send EBCB, Fire Safety, to the full board for approval.
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The next one is Policy E... Oh, I have it in the wrong order. Hold on. There it is. Policy EB, which is an existing policy, used to be called something else. Oh, it used to be called the Safety Committees. Now, we're going to update the name to go with what the Department of Labor calls this, which is the Joint Loss Management Committee. And you'll notice that everything is red because we have updated it to follow changes in state law. One of my missing, Mr. Lassard?
You've covered that pretty well.
Oh, City Risk, that's what I'm missing. Our City Risk Department looked at this as well.
Oh, yes. So, one of the main reasons why we wanted to change the language is the New Hampshire Department of Labor, the requirement is a joint loss committee. So, with that requirement, we want to make sure our policy reflects what the name should be. We're also finding, a few years ago, when myself and the Risk Management Department were starting to go to the schools and get involved with the Safety Committees, or now the Joint Loss Management Committees, the schools were kind of focusing heavily more on the emergency planning side, which is certainly a part of a joint loss safety committee. But they really weren't focusing, say, like, on injuries and stuff like that. So, I think just simply calling this something different kind of helps with that.
Does anybody have any questions or comments on this? These committees are not board committees. These are staff committees. So, and then, when they need something from us, Mr. Lassard lets me know.
Correct.
So, okay. So, I move to send EB, the Joint Loss Management Committee Policy, to the full board.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. All right. The next policy is EBCA, which is our Emergency Operations... No. Yeah. Which is our Emergency Operations Plans Policy. And once again, you'll notice that we're referencing a number of other policies up here in the top corner. EBB. EB, we just talked about. The EBCB, we're talking about another time. And we already did JICK and JLCJA, but this one is now required by law. So, does anyone have any? I'm sorry. Did you want to speak to that?
No.
Ms. Johnson? Ms. Darling, did you have questions on this one?
I do not.
I'm sorry. I feel like I'm going really fast, but...
I love it.
Okay.
I love it, man.
Yeah, after the last meeting, I'm loving this, too.
Okay. I just, some of them, I mean, these are very... We'll just be clear. These are very important policies because student safety is like, the most important thing that we do here, is making sure our kids are safe while they're learning and growing. Having said that, a lot of this stuff comes directly from state law, and so, we have to pass what the state law says. And in the cases that we have on tonight's agenda, there are also very practical things that should be done, so that's convenient. All right. So, I move to send EBCA, Emergency Operations Plans, to the full board for approval.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, great. And then, we have EBB, which is School Safety. And I don't have a note on this one, and I don't know why I don't have a note on this one. I had a note about it, and I don't know what I did with it. It's not brand-new, is it?
This will be a new policy.
Oh, it is a brand, brand-new policy. That's why I don't have a note on it. All right, go ahead.
This is one of the ones referenced in the first new policy we approved.
Yes.
You approved, excuse me, the JLCJ, JLCJA.
Yes.
This is one of the policies it referenced. So, work that I was doing caused Mr. Lassard to do extra work.
Thank you.
I still thank her for that.
Well, I appreciate how much work you both have done to really craft these policies out of just knowing that we had to have them and make them fit both the law and Nashua. So, I don't have notes on this one because it's brand, brand-new, and it's not something that we've had written out in this way before. So, does anyone have any questions about it? Go ahead, Ms. Darling.
So, number 11 says, "Procedures for Periodic Assessments by School Climate Professionals", dot, dot, dot. What is a, what is a school climate professional? Do we have, are those just individuals we have designated to kind of keep an eye on the social structure of the students, or...
So, Ms. Raymond, you might be able to speak a little bit more to this, but every few years, to my, best of my recollection, we've, the district has hired, I believe it was UNH, to do climate surveys with the students, the staff, and they take that information and bring it forward to district administrators and the board for review.
Awesome.
That's correct. So, I think the last time was in 2019. So, we usually do it about every four years or so. So, we should be due soon. But obviously, it's interesting how those surveys have changed over the last, say, 15 or 20 years, because what kids are worried about now is not at all what kids were worried about 20 years ago when I was in school. So, okay. The other thing I just wanted to note on this policy is that the reference policies at the top, one of the ones that we referenced here is JKAA-R, which probably we don't all remember off the top of our heads, but that is one of our Restraint Policies. So, that one is the Procedures for the Use of Child Restraint and Seclusion. And so, that policy was reviewed in 2017, but Policy JKAA, which is the actual policy, was just approved in 2021. So, I don't know why we have that gap or we didn't do JKAA-R last year, but I will, I'll pull it forward so that we can make sure to look at that next month. But the restraint policy was updated just, I think, in October? No, August last year, because last year, our state legislature made some changes to the law regarding that. So, and I don't have a lot of information on that, but I could try and answer any questions. No?
No, I think I'm good.
Okay. Ms. Johnson? Okay. So, I move to send EBB, which is School Safety, to the full board for approval.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then, the last one we have tonight is a recension, and my suggestion is that we rescind it. And this is Policy ADB, Drug-Free Workplace, Drug-Free Schools. I had talked to the administrative team here when we met for this one, and I also talked to Ms. Kinsella after that, again. That policy, we just did one for employees under GBEC, and we have a policy for students as well. And it seemed really redundant to have three policies that essentially say the same thing but are in three different locations so that if someone wanted to know, you have to look up all three, but then we'd also have to update all three anytime there's any change to anything. This A one, A is like, you know, mission statements and governing policies. To me, it seemed redundant. So, unless anyone has an objection, I move that we rescind it, and we just keep the student one that we recently approved and the staff one that we recently approved, and that covers the people who are in the schools.
I'm just trying to remember, the one we did for staff, I know that we got hung up on tobacco for a hot minute. Did it include the other substances as well, or is that just a tobacco policy?
So, the one, the one for students covers tobacco. Let me just pull up GB. So, GBEC, we looked at in March. And this one is alcohol and drugs, illicit drugs or illegal drugs. So, those are the only two things that are covered. We can't tell our staff that they can't, you know, smoke cigarettes on their own time.
Yeah.
Not in our schools. But you cannot on anywhere on school grounds. That's federal.
Yeah.
Any other?
Perfect.
Questions or concerns about that one? No? Well, that's exciting. All right. So, I move to rescind Policy ADB, Drug-Free Workplace, Drug-Free Schools, just with the understanding that we have two other policies that cover that, and we're not saying that those are okay to do at school.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, great. I should have put more stuff on this.
No.
Next month, we have another one of the policies that goes with these, JLCEA. I didn't put on this agenda because I thought it was long enough, and that is regarding the use of AEDs, the, how do you say it? Defibrillators. I don't know. What does the AE stand for?
Automatic... You got a name on the spot.
All right. Well, we, we...
It's Automatic Emergency Defibrillator.
Okay. Automatic Emergency Defibrillators. So, we actually looked at a policy regarding defibrillators a couple months ago, but it wasn't this one. The JLCEA one has to do with students, and so, that I asked administration to review, and hopefully, we'll have it ready for us for July. I also have the one that we just talked about, JKAA-R, which is the Restraints Procedures Policy that we didn't look at. And frankly, that one is in X2, so I don't even know if we still need it. So, that's something that I asked Tara if she could look into that as well. And then, I have a bunch of old-numbered policies that haven't been looked at since the last time we used numbers, which was like, in the '90s.
The turn of the century, right?
Yeah. So, and some of these will have been affected by changes in state law and changes in our teachers' contracts. So, we have resignations. We have parental and student rights. I know we've got some bills that have gone past this year regarding that. And then, we have some stuff about the way the board operates, like our board organization, our caucus. We don't caucus, so we should talk about that one. And then, record-keeping for the Board of Ed, because that has had some changes in state law regarding how we keep our templates for our minutes and some other stuff. So, if anybody has anything else they need me to bring forward, when I meet with Ms. Kinsella next week, please email me, and I will, I have like, a little running list that I keep, so I'll bring it, and we'll take a look at it and see what kind of review it needs. You know, like, does it need to go to risk management or, you know, farm out to somebody else and then come back so that we can make sure that we keep putting a dent in some of these old ones? I feel good. This was excellent.
Just in case anyone's curious, I Googled it, because I'm a millennial, and that's what we do. It's Automated External Defibrillator.
Automated External.
I don't know how my mama raised so many of us without Google. No idea how we survived.
Well, we had encyclopedias. Or an encyclopedia on CD-ROM if...